Welcome, everyone. As you may have guessed, I'm not Andrew, he's running a little late. So as vice chair, I will start the meeting off and I'll turn it over to Andrew when he's able to make it. All right, so let's start with our celebration of excellence.
So we have quite a long list of celebrations tonight and we will be going a little out of order because some of our recipients are at a baseball game right now. So when they come in, we'll have them come back so that they don't miss us talking about them. Hi, so our first is the Rockville Boag graduating senior recognition.
Yes, my name is Larry P. East from Bolton along with Brian Picarello. We represent the Consulting Committee of the Agricultural School. Science and Technology, not Boag anymore, they changed the name, okay? So it's Rockville Agricultural Science and Technology, okay? We have right now a teacher with us tonight and she'll represent us teaching, I mean Devon. We have a student here to present to the Board of Education on the program.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here. So I'm Leah Mako, I'm from Rockville High School, but more importantly, the Rockville AST program. We're Agriculture and Science Technology. So we're an agricultural education program and we're regional, so we pull students from all the surrounding towns. And one of the things we love to do this time of year is celebrate our graduating seniors. And so we have the seniors go to their town that they're from that sends them to Rockville to kind of talk a little about the program, what they've gotten out of it. And really quick before I have my wonderful student talk, just if you've never heard of an ag program before, we basically teach animal science, plant science, natural resources, mechanics. But we also teach leadership skills, job interview, resume building, public speaking, all of those important things. So we're really proud that our students are very well-rounded when they leave the program. But now I'll turn it over to Devon to just talk a little bit about their time in the program.
Thank you. Okay, my name is Devon Belmapp. I'm a senior at Rockville High School. And I would like to thank you guys for inviting me here to give me this opportunity to speak in front of you all. There's a lot to look back at my time throughout the Rockville Ag Program. But starting off at my freshman year, I joined an aquaculture CDE team. Now, CDE stands for Career Development Event. This is something you participate in outside of school. Throughout our weekly meetings, I learned a lot about aquaculture and we compete in the state against other local schools. I got third place, my team got third place my freshman year, and then we got second place my sophomore year. So these early accomplishments really give me something to put on my resume, even if it's just as a placeholder for the time being. Similarly to that, leadership is a class we have to take as a sophomore is required in the act program. This is a course I honestly think should be in every high school around the country. We learn where we spend, we take a deep dive into adult and life skills for at least a semester besides all the agriculture stuff we learn. This class gives every student the opportunities and resources to build a resume and a cover letter. I think we spent about like a month just on that specifically to make sure every student had, you know, something to be proud of and something to show off. And then in every agriculture class I take and every course, we research extensively on careers in the field. So we are very well set up for different careers we'd like to go into and exactly how to do that as well. My what? Tell me again, whatever. Trying to remember as best I could. So in the Rockville Ag Program, it's been essential to me and who I am as a person. Without the agriculture program, I wouldn't have the jobs I have now, the friends I've made and the experiences I've gained. I've got to try a little bit of everything from welding to training a fish to go through a hoop on command. It's a very interesting, very fun. Yeah, I already have several college credits ready for me when I'm at that point. It has set me up for the future. I feel far more prepared than my non-agriculture peers at Rockville High School. The program really pushes us ag kids to be the best version of ourselves and do the best we can in our courses. And I am very grateful for my four years at the program. And I'm very grateful for all of you and for Bolton for giving me the opportunity to go to Rockville and experience the experiences I've had and shape me into a well-rounded adult. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next award or our first award is actually the DAR, the Daughters of the American Revolution Youth Leadership Medal. And this may be awarded to a boy or girl in grades five to 11 who in the judgment of the school or student body best exemplifies the qualities of honor, service, courage, leadership, and patriotism. So the award is going to Lena Lane. Lena here? Want to stand up? You don't have to. We'd love to see you. Lena is a phenomenal student in and out of the classroom. When it comes to the qualities and traits of a terrific student, Lena goes above and beyond. In terms of historical interest, Lena is very interested in US history and loves discussing, learning, and engaging with the content in your classes. During class discussions, Lena leads by example and brings forth new ideas and questions that expand the discussion and concepts that are being presented. Lena also recently attended the middle school trip to Washington DC. It was fun, wasn't it? We had a great time. There, she was attentive and engaged in multiple aspects of American history, including the visit to the Capitol Building and the National Museums of American History and African-American History and Culture. She participated fully in interactive exhibits, including those related to sit-ins and protests during the Civil Rights Movement. She's an ideal candidate for this medal with a quiet, confident, consistent attention to learning. Not only this, Lena also has leadership skills when it comes to working with others, whether that be a project or simple source analysis task in class. She's very comfortable with expressing her own ideas within these groups and helping organize peers to produce the best work possible. Overall, Lena is well-deserving of the DAR Youth Leadership Medal and will continue to have a major impact in our schools and local communities. Congratulations. Next, we have the BCS CAST Scholar Leader Awards. And the first goes to Arianna Smith. Want to stand up? The eighth grade team proudly nominates Arianna Smith as a recipient of the 2024-2025 CAST Scholar Leader Award. Arianna is a dedicated student who consistently puts forth her best effort and her hard work is reflected in her academic achievements. In the classroom, she is known for her positive attitude and determination to succeed, qualities that are appreciated by both her teachers and her peers. Beyond academics, Arianna is actively involved in the art club and student council. This fall, she played an integral role in organizing the school's food drive, demonstrating her commitment to giving back to the community in meaningful and positive ways. The eighth grade team knows that great things are in store for this bright young woman. Arianna's teachers are proud to nominate her for this award. The next award goes to, it's another CAST Scholar Leader, to Thomas Wieland McFarland. I understand he's not here tonight, but we'll still read all about him. When looking at the characteristics of a community leader, scholar, and role model, Thomas goes above and beyond what a normal student should do in their day. From the classroom to the sports field, Thomas is diligent in his work and performance. This year, Thomas has taken on the task to play soccer at several different clubs, as well as getting involved with the US Youth National Team to complete camps for them to play one day at the highest possible level. This dedication and time spent to sports corresponds directly with his schoolwork. Whenever Thomas is out of school to attend one of these sporting events, he never asks to cut corners with his work. He is a student that buckles down and completes everything without taking shortcuts. This work ethic shows a tremendous passion, not only in his interest in sports, but to also understand the importance of education and how it will shape the future of his life. By showing these positive actions in everyday life, Thomas has a direct influence on his peers on what an exemplary student should look like. We are proud to have Thomas as our eighth-grade Bolton Center School Scholar Leader Award recipient. Next, we have a little write-up about the Heifer International fundraiser that took place at the Bolton Center School. The BCS Student Council makes a positive impact on the school community throughout spirit days, being helpers in elementary classrooms, providing all students with surprise holiday giveaways, and hosting two middle school dances during the year. They also make a positive impact on the Bolton community through two food drives for the Bolton Senior Center held in November and May. Lastly, they strive to make a positive worldwide impact on the Heifer International fundraiser. On April 11th, the BCS community participated in a PJ and stuffed animal day for Heifer International. The student council asked for a $1 donation to participate in this day. BCS raised $547, which meant they could donate the following animals whose sustainable food source or economic impact can help a family in need. The final location of where the animals get sent is determined in June and we'll get a letter updating us on where the animals were sent. So they were able to provide six foxes of chickens whose eggs provide a nutritious food source, two hives of honeybees whose honey can provide a nutritious food source, two goats whose milk can be used to make cheese or butter, one sheep whose wool can be woven to make warm clothing. The fundraiser was a huge success and we greatly appreciate the support of the BCS community. We're gonna hold off on a couple of things right now. People going on to retiring, right? All right, so we'll come back to the rest of the student awards when our students come in from their athletic events. But we will move on to honor some of our staff who are retiring at the end of the school year. So the first, Randy Cornaglia, she's not here today, but we did Mr. Giard and Ms. Kelleher and I went over, went around and read her little speech to her and presented with the flowers from the board. So she is not able to be here and but at least she got to participate in a little celebration. So I will read, "After nearly three decades of extraordinary service at Bolton Center School, Randy Cornaglia is retiring, leaving behind a legacy that has transformed both technology in the classroom and the lives of students and staff. Randy began her career in 1986 as a fourth-grade teacher in South Windsor before moving to the private sector where she worked as a computer hardware designer and program manager. Her passion for teaching brought her back to education in 1997 when she joined BCS as a math and computer teacher. At that time, BCS had a single lab of Apple II computers and no technology plan. From those early days, Randy helped lead the school's evolution into a tech board institution. She helped draft the district's first technology plan, created professional development workshops, and wrote the original K-8 computer curriculum, foundation still visible in today's program. As a computer resource teacher, she brought energy and innovation to every grade level. She championed Bolton's first mobile lab and introduced coding long before it was common, adopting tools like Scratch and The Hour of Code to inspire creativity and problem-solving. Ever the lifelong learner, she often grew her instruction by learning directly from her students. Her impact extended beyond the computer lab. When asked to lead the K-5 Math MTSS program, she embraced the challenge despite not having taught math in years. Under her leadership, the program grew from a computer-only model to one built on relationships, competence, and individual growth. Through decades of rapid change from Apple 2s to Google Workspace, Randy remained a visionary and compassionate teacher, ensuring students had the digital literacy skills needed for the future. Beyond BCS, she is a proud mother to two sons, Ryan and Jared, and a devoted dog mom to her rescue puppy, Kisma. A seasoned traveler, her journeys have taken her to China, Kenya, Ecuador, Iceland, and beyond. And through it all, she remains a passionate supporter of the Philadelphia Eagles. As she embarks on this next chapter, we celebrate Ms. Cornaglia for her contributions to the BCS school community. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. Next, we will be honoring Donna Fisher. You know Donna's here. Want to stand up? Tonight, we recognize sixth and seventh grade social studies teacher Donna Fisher as she steps into a well-earned retirement after serving the students of Bolton for the last 11 years. While we celebrate this next chapter, we also reflect with gratitude on a career that has touched the hearts and minds of so many. After years in other nearby districts and then taking time to raise her three children, when Donna came to BCS, she served as a long-term substitute and classroom teacher at several different grade levels, kindergarten, second, fourth, and fifth. And most recently, as a social studies and geography teacher to the sixth and seventh graders at Bolton Center School. Passionate about both teaching and learning from our youth, this position has allowed her the opportunity to share discussions about people, places, and circumstances that make us all unique and valuable. These experiences extend beyond the classroom to events Donna spearheaded, like the powerful portrayal of America's white table at our Veterans Day Assembly and the making of Carlskone, how would I say it? Thank you. I did look them up, so I kind of have an idea what they are. After school to celebrate the Mexican tradition during Carnival. See, my cheat note didn't help me there, did it? Mrs. Fisher is a consummate professional who takes pride in not only her lesson, but the relationships that she has built with her students and colleagues. At the start of this year, she even created a who's who slideshow with pictures that included every employee so that we could all get to know each other better. Her dedication to the success of Bolton Skills, willingness to tackle any challenge, and humble leadership will truly be missed. We wish her many adventures in the years to come. Congratulations, Donna.
That's been my appreciation. Right, that concludes
We have a couple more.
Oh, well, getting ahead of myself.
All right, next, we are honoring Doris Mead, who has been a paraprofessional in our district. For over two decades, Doris has done everything asked of her and more. She has dedicated herself wholeheartedly to every task with unwavering commitment. She worked diligently with great attention to detail, kindness, love, and compassion for her students. Doris went above and beyond for her students and the programs she supported. She has been an amazing coworker and support for her students. As she enters retirement, Doris should carry with her the profound love, respect, and gratitude of all who have had the privilege to work alongside her. She will be deeply missed, but we know she has made connections that will last for years to come. Donna couldn't be here, but we wish her well and we did go to deliver her flowers today and unfortunately missed her, so we'll try again tomorrow. So congratulations. One more. Right, and last, but certainly not least, we have a retirement message for our superintendent Kristen Hecht. After more than 30 years of dedicated service to the field of education, we honor the retirement of Superintendent Kristen Hecht. Her impact has left an indelible mark on students, educators, and communities alike, and it is with great deep gratitude and admiration that we recognize her tonight. Over the course of her remarkable career, Kristen has exemplified what it means to lead with vision, integrity, and compassion. From her early days in the classroom to her time at the helm of district leadership, she has consistently championed excellence in education and put students at the heart of every decision. As superintendent of Bolton Public Schools, Kristen has guided the district through times of growth, challenge, and transformation. Under her leadership, Bolton's first strategic plan was developed, a lasting framework that continues to guide the district today. She was a passionate advocate for both students and teachers, always seeking to create an environment where every learner could thrive. Her contributions are too many to count, but to name just a few, Kristen was instrumental in key improvements at Bolton Center School, from upgrades in the gym and parking lot to implementing one-to-one phone book initiatives, enhancing classroom sound systems. She also prioritized staffing district-wide, ensuring that instructional coaches and essential staff were in place to meet the diverse needs of all students. But above the accomplishments and initiatives, what truly sets Kristen apart is her genuine care for people. She understood that schools are not just places of learning, they're communities. She believed every child deserved to be, to feel seen, supported, and empowered, and she modeled this belief every day. Kristen greeted every staff member, attended countless assemblies, and took personal interest in the lives of those around her. She showed us that Bolton is more than just a school district, it's a family. On a personal note, I've had the privilege of working alongside Kristen for the past 12 years. She's been a friend, a confidant, a teacher in the truest sense. No matter how busy she was, she always made time, both personally and professionally. Kristen is one of the most caring individuals I have ever met, and her kindness has made a lasting impression. As she steps into retirement, we thank Superintendent Hecht for her unwavering commitment, tireless work, and the legacy she leaves behind. She reminded us to always do what is right and what is best for students. While she may be closing this chapter, the impact of her work will be felt for generations to come. Kristen, we wish you all the best in this new season of life, may be filled with rest, joy, health, and a well-earned company of family and loved ones. Thank you for everything.
Thank you very much. If I could just say a couple of things while I cry through it, I'd appreciate that. Is that okay? Thanks. So first, I'd like to offer my congratulations to Randy, Donna, and Doris for your dedicated service to students. It's been an honor to serve with you. It has been one of the greatest honors of my career to serve as Bolton Superintendent of Schools for the last 12-plus years and to have been an educator for the last 35 years. I feel truly blessed to work with such amazing educators and support staff who always focus on what is right and best for kids. I've also been very fortunate over the years to partner with such dedicated Board of Education members, parents, public officials, the community, and above all else, our students. Bolton Public Schools truly is an amazing place to work and it has always felt like part of my family. Thank you all very much.
Now we're done. All right. Thank you, Ms. Goldsneider. I saw Andrew. He's not ready yet to take the So normally at this time, Andrew would let those of you who don't need to be here for the rest of the meeting to go if you wish to do so. You, of course, are welcome to stay through the rest of the meeting. We're gonna, yes, there are some that we will return to when they are back from their sporting events. Thank you all, everyone who came tonight. There's Andrew. Let Andrew take over and move the meeting forward.
Make you think that about standing up at that job. Hello, sorry, I had traffic. That was the end of the celebration of excellence, I presume?
When the students come in from their plane, like baseball.
So we're gonna move on to comments from the audiences or anyone out there would like to make a comment from the audience this evening. Great, we don't have additions to the agenda, do we, or do we? All right, on to routine business and the approval of minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 9, 2025 Board of Ed Business Meeting.
I'll make the motion. Wait a minute.
Thank you. Do you want to make questions, comments, or edits on these minutes? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed or abstaining? That passes and on to Board of Ed Committee reports and curriculum. Curriculum was going to have a meeting, but we canceled it due to everything being covered at our last meeting. But I have no new courses to bring forward going into the summer, so. Finance.
So the finance committee met yesterday, you know, given where we are with the budget cycle, there's lots to talk about, so it's pretty substantive meeting from a transfer standpoint. In the packet, there is a number of transfers, you know, to go through. At this time of the year, there's usually a number of transfers just because we're shoring up the budgets and moving the last, you know, amount of funds around. I won't go through every single one, but I'll pull up some of the more significant ones, unless we have to go through everyone. But we'll go through. So we had a $34 or a $43.38 transfer from site in SLP test for special education, general testing supplies. Then we had a reclass of $11 to purchase additional world language supplies. We had a reclass to transfer $500 in special education instructional supply from VHS to BCS for supplies. And then we had a reclass to cover PE softball unit supplies of $640 from two, two wild lines, two instructional supplies. We had a reclass of $1,438 to purchase library books from BCS online subscription services and dues and fees to library books. We had a transfer from site testing to general testing supplies of $16 from VHS to BCS for tests. We had a reclass of $1,214 to purchase math supplies, and that was from online subscription services to instructional supplies. We had a $366 reclass to purchase science supplies from BCS periodicals to BCS instructional supplies. We had a purchase of ELA supplies of $191.66 from a couple of different areas to instructional supplies, very long. There was a $2,293 transfer to purchase building administration supplies and replacement items for year-end needs and activities. You know, tables and replacement, you know, spare phones and ongoing replacement for bandwidth equipment that's no longer legal for FCC, from VHS test to other supplies. There was a $4,054 transfer to cover year-end events and supplies from professional development to central office-related services. $24 transfer to cover a VISA print order. A more significant one for $2,149 from curriculum and program improvement to systems to cover school messenger for the 7.1 to 6.30 25 period while we're transitioning to smart sites. And so the overlap in services provides a smooth transition without interruption. $361 reclass to purchase coffee and bagels for staff appreciation on May 8 from general supplies for classrooms to food. $344 transfer to cover clean harbor chemical removal shortfall due to inflation from instructional supplies and dues and fees to professional services. $26 increase for health and PE. And then we had two larger ones, which we had approved last meeting. So ahead of anything greater than 10,000, that must be pre-approved and then the transfer happens. So there was a $33,745 transfer from salaries and operations to cover the remaining shade replacement at BCS that we approved last time. And then you'll see the significant $63,000 transfer from salaries to instructional technology equipment to cover the projected amount for the 84 desk stops and 20 monitors that we had approved last meeting. And then also on that topic, there was a $1,853 transfer from various technology supplies and repairs to cover the excess amounts for the computers for that purchase.
Thank you. We have a motion, please, to approve the April transfers. Second. Anyone have any questions or comments about any of these? Actually, is there any detail on the 4,054 reclass that just, that professional development, central office related?
I do not have a I'm not sure what it is either. It's because all on.
Yes, so those are to cover all the year-end activities and the staff gives. Hold on. Also, any other items that Central Office needs? any other items that central office needs?
I'm assuming we had an excess in professional development, you know, perhaps.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Does anyone else have any questions? All those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? We have more.
We'll go through some bid waivers further on the agenda. So we'll go over those then. Um, and then from a, a budget standpoint, we're still projecting full expenditure at seventy-one percent, which is very comparable with the prior year. Um, no reason, we just can't discuss as a committee, no reason to update that yet. We'll wait, you know, see how the remainder of the year goes. Um, so that means there's no revised projected um, surplus. We continue to have an eighty-four thousand, which is what we, we had communicated to the finance committee during our last meeting, um, that we continue to have that eighty-four, eighty-five thousand dollar placeholders for surplus. You know, that could be used, you know, by the end of the year. It's not a huge excess surplus, um, given some of the, the variability that we have, but that is where we are at this point.
Thank you. Uh, PTA?
Sorry, can I ask a question? Um, she says revised projected of eighty-four thousand, that includes a eighty thousand dollar grand spare? I don't think we've approved that yet.
We did last meeting, we did the one hundred and fifty for the line and standard.
But the eighty is for the food service line. I don't recall doing that yet.
This just says projected transfer.
Right, we're trying to, if I could, can I be heard?
Please.
Just trying to wait um, to see as much as we can um, for the, for the final transfer for the food service shortage. That's what Pasol is projecting at this point in time. And then the, which is what Chris is talking about. And then the remaining monies are what we are anticipating uh, maybe remaining um, at the end. And like Ashley said, we've had a lot of things go wrong this year, so to leave us with zero, I don't think would be prudent.
So the actual amounts of the transfer to cover the food shortage will, will address that at our June meeting?
Correct.
Any other questions? Done with finance, and I'll say special ed is ever-changing in landscape.
But obviously, from a, a town finance standpoint, it could be a very busy season, so.
Um, all right, now on to PTA updates.
So on April, Saturday, April twenty-sixth, we had our VCS spring playing for swings fundraiser. Uh, I'm not quite sure the exact amount we have officially have raised yet. We're still working through all the fine details, but we did pretty well. Uh, and then we're gearing up for, or finishing out Teacher Appreciation Week tomorrow. We celebrated Monday, they did a Cinco de Mayo, a nice taco theme for the teachers. Since we had Tom's traveling truck come in for coffee. We also did the very appreciated uh, like DoorDash uh, room service for the teachers as well again with snacks. They got a little card, said this is what I want, and then all the one Tuesday, we packed it all up. So when they had it delivered to them in the morning. I guess, I think that's how we're rounding out the year at this point. And keep working towards the uh, the funding for a new playground.
Thank you very much.
I thought the event was really good. Um, Daryl, I think it was really nicely named, so that went a long way with a lot of people.
Three board members and one principal. All right, uh, VHS Student Representative Report.
So last Friday, May second, VHS hosted the junior senior prom at Villa Luisa from six PM to ten PM. Students danced the night away, enjoying a delicious meal, fun drinks, and good company. A big thanks to the members of the prom committee for putting on such a fun event. Next Friday, May sixteenth, the student council will be hosting a fire pit night. For a five dollar ticket, students will be able to enjoy food and fun to celebrate the end of AP exams and nearing the end of the school year. Attendees will also be given a raffle ticket to participate in the drawing for four raffle baskets, each one compiled by a different graduating class. On Wednesday, May twenty-first, the Bolton High School Concert Band, Jazz Band, and Percussion Ensemble will be performing in their pops concert alongside an art show that will feature works created by VHS students. Everyone involved is working diligently to put on an excellent performance. Our spring sports season is almost halfway through. Baseball record is currently one to ten, but we'll see after tonight. Softball's record is four to two. Jack had the fast times at Ridgefield High, Bridgefield High meet, and many members ran personal bests. And we have the uh, Gert Hartford invitation on Saturday that we're expecting big PRs. Golf's record is zero to five, and tennis is one to seven. It is finally AP exam season. Students have been studying hard, and a lot of them have already taken exams or will be taking them next week. Last Thursday, we had our spring choir concert and culinary showcase. Both were hugely successful, and both great music and good food were shared. Finally, for the next two years, Alexa Flores will be the new Board of Ed Student Representative, and I personally am very grateful to have her on.
All right, thank you very much. As always, you're welcome to stay or welcome to go study. All right, on to community meeting reports. Is there any community meetings to report on?
We attended the April Scholarship Fund Meeting. Not really too much to report. Uh, scholarship applications closed uh, this past Sunday. I'm not involved in the scholarship selection this year. I can't tell you how many applications we had or percentage of Bolton High applied, but I'm confident that reviewing the applications if you can. We'll find out at graduation.
Thank you. Was there anyone else who attended any meetings to report on? Now turn things over to Director Goldsneider for tonight's Superintendent of Schools reporting.
Thank you. I'll ask Director Julio Casper to present on the Leader and Educator Professional Growth Evaluation Support Plan, PDE.
Um, so we did this a year ago, so I'm gonna give you a little bit of a refresher on some of the terminology that we're going to talk about. Uh, it will be quick, but we mentioned last year that we would be likely coming back to the table with some adjustments that we would want to make to the plan. Um, so that is what we are here. We're asking for one adjustment to the plan, but I'm gonna give you a little bit of background first. Um, first of all, this was like, let's put this word. Okay, let's place the button. Yeah. No, it seems like I got it. There we go. All right. Just to reiterate, we went through this with a professional development and evaluation committee originally. Um, that is made up of a group of teachers and administrators, and this was collaborative with that committee and our A-team committee um, as uh, required by our Department of Education. The key terms, and my little video is still up there, um, that we're going to talk about very briefly are a formal evaluation. When we say that, we mean a full class evaluation. That means you are staying for the duration of the class period. Um, a formative evaluation, that also has a pre and post. A formative is a shorter observation planned or unplanned. Is less than full class period based on the um, Common Core of Teaching indicators. And a review of practice is an assessment of work outside the classroom, focusing on professional responsibilities and teacher leadership. And I'm gonna give you a couple of examples of that, because you might be like, why would you tie it up? The review of practice, and we talked about this last year. Right. So the new teacher evaluation process, which is, this is for new teachers, not the new process, for new teachers, new to the district and/or new to the profession. This is what they are currently doing, and we are making no changes to this. This is a robust evaluation plan for a couple of years. There is, they have two formal evaluations. We split with another administrator, so it's not the same person doing those, uh, because we may see them in a different um, different capacity. Uh, they also have one formative observation, which previously was called an informal. We were hoping for feedback visits, and they have to do one review of practice. So we have to observe them in a meeting setting, in a planning and placement team, in, as you know, in a teacher leadership capacity. And this is what we are proposing for the veteran teacher evaluation process. Currently, the plan that we approved last year, we were hoping, we were feeling very ambitious about doing shorter visits more frequently. The problem with that is we all stayed longer. We wanted to do ten, fifteen-minute visits, and we're like, yeah, we're just gonna, we're gonna do this, we're gonna pop in. And then every single one of us was staying for almost a class period. And it wound up becoming untenable. So we were looking originally at two really short observations and two reviews of practice. The change we would like to make is to go to one formative observation of longer duration, because that is what we were doing, and keep the review of practice. So they can do, you can do two observations or one observation and one review of practice. The review of practice comes in very um, it's a very useful tool when you're looking for someone who doesn't necessarily have a traditional class. For example, a school psychologist, Mrs. Goddard. So we don't want to put a spark hack around, oh, we were gonna look at how she's handling work with students, how she's handling possibly a crisis, how she is um, helping a parent understand a report in meetings. So that would be a good example of a review of practice. All teachers, veteran and new teachers, are having goal-setting meetings, meeting mid-year, and we are all getting ready to do our end of year meetings. So everything else has stayed the same. We are still having a feedback-focused approach. We are still maintaining all of the goal-setting per statute, per requirement, but we were doing that before, so it's not a huge change. Um, so the reason for this was our shorter visits were not giving us the information we wanted. We thought we would be able to see enough, and we decided that it wasn't right enough. So we would like to return to a longer visit with slightly fewer um, observations, continuing with three goal-setting meetings. And the benefits are enhanced feedback, because we felt like, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I have a special gift for walking into a classroom where kids are taking a test. I'm gonna do my, I plan it, and then I walk in, and there's silence. So then I have to change it all and, and make um, repeat visits that, on that. It is a streamlined process. Uh, it was collaboratively developed, and it still creates balanced oversight. Uh, it is also in keeping, as we reached out to our colleagues with area schools, it's pretty standard to what other PDECs have proposed in them. Um, these are just examples of reviews of practice. I gave you one. We have so many teachers who go above and beyond planning community events, doing things in their leadership roles, going above and beyond even those leadership roles, which you'll see in a few minutes. Um, and extended learning. We have teachers who have founded clubs, who have started things um, just to get students engaged and interested. It speaks to collaboration with their colleagues, it speaks to collaboration with families. And our next steps for implementation are having you approve this change. Uh, everything else stays the same. Uh, we did change some language, but that doesn't change the plan. We provided some guided questions for teachers at the end of the year, small things like that, but no real changes other than this one. We need to approve this for the state, uh, communicate that to the faculty at the beginning of the school year is when we do that uh, in our August days and implementation monitoring, like we did this year. So we don't want to stay with something that isn't working, and we want to continue to evaluate it and check it.
Any questions?
Mr. President has a quick question. So board approval first when it goes to the state?
Yes, or resubmitted.
Okay, is there any feeling that the, or chance that the state will not approve it?
It's highly unlikely, because I have had conversations not only with um, area PDEC chairs, but also other districts in a, in a PLC that I'm in, it just reached out, and it's pretty consistent, and those all had approval. So there's no reason to think that way.
I apologize if you mentioned this. I don't think I heard it, but um, has this change been run by the teachers union?
Yes, um, Mr. Air sits on the PDEC, uh, and he is our voice of the teachers union on our team.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the revisions to the Leader and Educator Professional Growth Evaluations and Support Plan?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, does anyone have any other questions or comments about this?
I'd just like to say thank you for continuing to work at this, and you know, it's great that you identified a sticking point and came up with a creative, hopefully better, better way to make these evaluations work.
Obviously, those teams are great, so uh, they're just really committed to putting together high-quality evaluation teachers for the benefit of students. So now I'm going to turn it over and switch the presentation.
We have votes, so.
I'm sorry.
Do they anyone have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Abstaining.
Um, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Principal Keller, this is Carvalho, and this is Brad Jack for our MTSS Multi-Curricular Systems Support Presentation.
Evening, everyone. So I will start by talking a little bit about MTSS at our school, VCS. So to start, um, um, so I'll talk a little bit about the framework. So our MTSS framework really focuses on aligning our academic, behavioral, and social-emotional learning in a fully integrated system of support for the benefit of all students. We really look to differentiate support for students um, in order to promote that equitable access for all. Uh, we are looking to emphasize positive school culture and climate. As always, we use data to inform all of our instruction across all three tiers, which I'll get into on the next slide. Um, and as always, we also include professional learning for all now. So here are our tiers. So you can see it's split up between academic and behavioral and social-emotional. So to start, we have our academic tiers. Um, our tier one really is our universal tier. It meets the needs of most students. It's our high-quality instruction using our core curriculum based in research. Our educators are amazing at continuously reviewing their instructional practices and regularly monitoring progress of the kids in their classroom. And then we have tier two. So these are those students who are in need of a little bit of additional support. Um, that is really our targeted instruction that's supplemental to the core instruction, and that's delivered in small groups in the classroom by classroom teachers. It's usually about three to four times a week, twenty minutes a session. That's at the elementary level, and then at the middle school level, it's twice a week for forty minutes a session. Um, so the minutes actually really equal out between elementary and middle school, just kind of happening at different times based on scheduling. There is still frequent progress monitoring at this level. And then we have our tier three. So that's individualized instruction for students that really aren't responding to those tier-two supports. For most cases, a student will start in tier two, go through a cycle, which is about six to eight weeks, and then will say, okay, they might need to be moved to our tier three, which is given by our interventionist, our reading or math interventionist um, on the elementary level. So these are more intensive, very frequent progress monitoring, about once a week to every other week. Um, it's five times a week for thirty minutes a session. And then if students are still not responding here, that is when we look to a possible special education referral. Um, and then our behavioral, social, emotional. If a classroom teacher in the tier one has a behavioral concern, they will target that behavior and then kind of track that data for four to six weeks using an intervention. So for example, a sticker chart, an incentive whip. Um, if that's not working, they then bring that up at an MTSS meeting with our behavioral staff. And our behavioral staff analyzes that data in order to craft goals and modify the interventions. Then they continue to collect that data for another four to six weeks. Um, and then tier three, we would get our BCBDA involved, who would observe, review, and make a plan with parental consent. So our process at VCS, so we start by holding initial MTSS meeting at the beginning of um, every year, and we go through every single person in every single grade, because we really make sure we do not want to miss anybody. Um, MTSS goals are then formed with a team, so that's myself, the classroom teacher, our specialist or our interventionist, and appropriate support staff, and those goals. And those goals are progress monitored throughout the cycle. Um, as I said before, tier two are those classroom teachers who are providing the in-class supports during our what I need time. Um, and that is really, really assisted by our instructional coaches with instructional materials and progress monitoring tools. And then tier three are our interventionist or specialists who use a variety of research-based programs and progress monitoring tools as well. Um, these meetings are then held every six to eight weeks. Um, in order to discuss each student's progress and intervention, next steps, which can include being exited from intervention, moving to tier two or tier three, or staying with their current intervention, or like I mentioned before, um, sometimes we do move to special education referral after a certain point as well. Um, if teachers have a deeper academic concern or a behavioral concern, OTPT speech, whatever really their concern may be, they invite that staff member to their MTSS meeting um to discuss that student's data and then we plan for next steps. And so I think really the key here is in the team approach. It's very collaborative and we all work together to do what's best for all of our students. Um, and as always, parents are communicated with throughout the cycle. So at the beginning of the year, they get a letter. At the end of every cycle, they get a letter updating um the parent on the progress of their student and what that next step for that student's gonna be. And at the end of the year, they get a little letter just saying, hey, practice this over the summer. And so here is an example of some data from one of our kindergarten students this year. So their goal was to identify a rhyme with eighty percent accuracy. This student was seen one-on-one thirty minutes a day for five times a week. So that is our tier three intervention by one of our reading interventionists. Um, and as you can see, starting in the beginning of November, they were kind of under that fifty percent. Um, you see all their progress monitoring data there. And then by beginning of May, they completely mastered their goal. They got to a hundred percent. And the interventionist wanted to be sure that this is still occurring. So she is actually still progress monitoring this goal, just not as frequent, just to make sure that that student is being able to stick with that skill of identifying a rhyme. And then this is a middle school example. So went from kindergarten to eighth grade. So this is an eighth grade student who was working on improving number sense. Um, this student was seen in small group, forty minutes a session for two times a week. So that's that tier two intervention. And as you can see here, the pre-assessment was at the beginning of that six to seven weeks. Um, the student got, you know, a lower score. And then by the end, their post-assessment, they almost reached that eighty percent. Um, and this is a goal that the student will continue to work on too, to just maintain kind of mastery like I said. And while obviously the data is so important and all the information is so important, I think the most telling is really asking the kids, how does your intervention group help you? And so these are just some quotes from some of our amazing students. Um, a seventh grade student said, it helped me understand adding integers more and do better in class. The extra time really helped. A third grade student, my intervention helps me because I can read stories more clearly and confidently. It improved my writing style from an eighth grade student. A second grade student said they can spell more words and know how to read words. Um, a fifth grade student said, the student really wants to know how to read fluently in a long book and his teachers are helping him reach that goal. An eighth grade student said it was fun and interactive. I learned a lot. And what I did learn, I can apply to ELA in the future. And then lastly, a third grade student, I feel awesome about my small group because it helps him with my math skills and makes me a better math student. Before I came to Mrs. McLoachy, who was our math interventionist, I had a hard time with math and it's easy now. And so now I would like to.
You're on it, right, Monica?
I'm thinking, yeah. Well, it doesn't matter. It seems like it's working.
Um, so here at Bolton High School, um, we, Jen and I are the coordinators for MTSS. Um, we have multiple roles of this, with psychologists and then there's one of our science teachers. Um, we are due to this role this year. Uh, so um, we're excited to take it on and um we've made some changes from last year. Um, also involved with the MTSS process, um, our principal, other school counselors. Um, we have MTSS providers who, um, a little bit uh different from um center school. Who does interventionists, who are using classroom teachers um to provide um the MTSS interventions, whether they're within the classroom or um it's during a student's study hall to provide those higher levels of uh support. Um, at the beginning of the year, um, or actually before the year started, a master schedule was designed for the school uh to make sure that we had um MTSS providers available each period of the day. Now, it doesn't mean that every day we have someone every period. Um, what it means is every period of the day is covered at least one day. Um, and our teachers, our providers have been super flexible, um, being uh willing to flip-flop their schedules uh based on student needs. So one day they might have a planned period, D period and support a student through MTSS D period. Later in the week, that might look different, um, but they've been great and uh been willing to even switch those, you know, at, as the needs of our students change. They've been really flexible with those, which is wonderful and we really appreciate it. Really just everybody looking out for what, what our students need. We, um, the tier one supports, we've been working a lot on this year. Uh, working to develop them with our full staff, uh, using some of our faculty meetings and professional development meetings to look at what we currently have at the tier one level and then how we can further develop those and just teachers using that time to really share what they're doing and what's working. Um, and, and really giving each other really great ideas, which has been wonderful. Um, and uh using our PLCs as well that we need weekly to also share that information and come up with ideas and developing new ideas. Um, and then also uh just communications um that we have with staff. Um, looking at our tier two supports, um, some of our tier two and tier three supports. Um, they can be similar, but um as Mel was saying, to like looking at uh the frequency and duration of the support is sometimes what makes the difference between a tier two and tier three support. Um, you know, we have some uh different things available to all students at the tier one level. For example, connection. Um, all students have the opportunity and connections. They can go see teachers for extra help. So that's available to everybody. At the next level, um, we have, a teacher may ask a student, hey, why don't you come see me tomorrow? And we can, we can work on that during connection. So really trying to pull specific students in. Um, and then um at the next level, we might be actually, you know, if the student doesn't come, they're falling behind for that student and really trying to work with them. So using that. So that's kind of an example of, um, you know, being able to use something that could be more of a tier one, open to any student, to more identifying those students and making sure we pull them in during that uh connections time. Um, our students that are receiving uh the greater support through MTSS, we're using their study halls so that we're not interrupting um their classes. And again, we're balancing the schedules of the MTSS providers to uh figure out how to best service kids. Um, sometimes it's subject specific. We have two math teachers that are um available as MTSS providers. And so obviously if it was to the math needs, we're trying to coordinate as best we can that they can work with one of them. Um, but really depending on, on what the need is and the availability of the student and how flexible we can do with the teacher's schedule to. Um, so we wanted to take advantage of our time tonight just to shed a little bit more light on how we're working with, within our tier three structure. Uh, because that's the, the part of MTSS that involves perhaps a little bit more planning, a little bit more of, you know, work on the, on the side of the MTSS team. Um, so for our tier three students and some of our tier two, as Amelia and Leah have both mentioned, a lot of it depends on frequency and duration of the interventions, whether it's tagged as a tier two or a tier three. Um, but this is our general process. We always start with looking at the data. Um, so here at the high school, we are regularly analyzing a variety of data sources, PSAT scores, SAT scores, uh course, current course grades. Uh, we run what we call the DF list every few weeks, which just generates a list of students who, at that moment in time, maybe are earning a D or an F in one of their courses. And so we kind of get a list going in our committee of students to keep an eye on. Is this just a, you know, a weird blip? They had a off week? Or is this a trend that we're starting to see throughout the quarter? Um, we communicate very closely with the school counselors. So if there's anything circulating off through teachers, through the guidance team, we're made aware of that as well. Um, so regular analysis of the data, looking for trends, looking to see which names kind of keep reappearing um throughout the course of the, of the quarter. Um, once we sort of have our eye on a few students who might need a little additional support, we work to develop a plan. So Leah and I will work with not only the counselors, but the students' current teachers um to identify specifically what are their needs? How much of an intervention do they need? Are we looking at, what should we checking in with the student? Is it more frequent? Um, to kind of help us decide, is this more of a tier two interventions? We can use some connections time to get the student caught up? Or do we need a little bit um more um structured intervention? Um, once we develop a plan, again, collaborative, very team focused, team based, um, we then provide the interventions. So as Leah said, we have a handful of classroom teachers that in our master schedule have been scheduled. We have a very complicated matrix that we refer to every week. Um, so that every period, at some point during the week, we have a teacher available to work one-on-one with students um that we identified as needing these additional interventions. Um, they is always, it was always occurring during a student's study hall. They are not being pulled to other classes. They're not pulled to elective courses. Um, it's, this is in lieu of their regularly scheduled study hall periods so that they're not missing additional academic time. Um, we work with our classroom teacher who's been tagged as the interventionist for that period to talk about what would be the appropriate supports and interventions, how to work with the student, what type of data to be collecting. Um, and then our last step is progress monitoring. We meet currently weekly uh to discuss the students that are receiving these supports as a team with our MTSS providers. Um, we're looking at the data, we're seeing the trends we're seeing and determining are the interventions successful? Do we need to tweak anything? Do we need to decrease the frequency of the sessions? Do we need to increase it? So that's kind of our general format that we follow for our students. So for this year, seeing how this was our first year taking on MTSS, Leah and I, uh, we picked a couple of focus areas really to, to tackle and kind of put all our efforts into. Um, so math skills historically are skills that students just tend to struggle with. Um, so math, and we had the benefit, as Leah said, of having two math teachers available to provide these supports. Um, so we really focused on math skills for um a, a few of our students. Um, again, we used um analysis of different assessment data, their course grades, historical grades and other previous math courses, um, feedback from our math teachers. Um, identified where the skill gap was, developed a plan for those students. Um, I've had our math teachers working with them throughout the course of the year and are monitoring their progress on a weekly basis. Um, the other large area that we decided to focus on was executive functioning skills. So these are the skills needed to help you succeed at everything in life, whether it's time management, organization, planning. Um, and this came about as we were analyzing that DF grade report. Um, as we dug deeper into the data, we found that the common trend was that most of these students weren't performing poorly in classes due to lack of ability, but lack of turning in materials or turning in assignments. So we had um an issue with work completion. Um, so we identified that fairly early on in the school year and decided this, we think, is a broader focus area that not only through our tier one interventions do we need to look at, but what can we do for some of these students who just, even with those tier one interventions are still struggling with work completion? Um, so we honed in on these skills of planning and prioritization. A lot of students have trouble kind of planning, what should I be working on today during study hall or during connections? What's the most pressing assignment that I need to complete? And we have a number of students who really struggle with organization, whether it's physical organization of their materials, you look in their backpack and it's just this sea of papers. Um, or even just the mental organization. How do I take all my thoughts and organize that into a cohesive paper? Um, so those were the executive functioning skills we decided to kind of really target this year. Um, but again, developing interventions with those, with those teachers, working with the students, what, you know, let's come up with an organizational plan for you, Leah. And let's sit and look at what works best for you as a student and let's keep circling back to that. Um, every week, what's working, what's not working. Um, we also were looking to build capacity within those students um to take a little bit more ownership for their work completion. One of the things we developed was a progress, weekly progress monitoring chart where the student sits with their MTSS provider, once a week, pulls up their grades in Power School and goes class by class. Let's look at how you're doing. Do you have any missing assignments? Do you have upcoming tests? What do you need to do next? And really trying to build that skill with our goal being those students being able to do that independently. Sure. So we have some samples in there. Oh, that's okay. Oh, you did, yeah, perfect, right there. Yep. So um, one student, uh, we're looking at this student's sample data. Um, our goal for this student was we wanted um them to be turning in a minimum of eighty percent of their assignments um in their classes. And we were looking at prioritization. So like Jen was saying, um, you prioritize what you do. So, you know, um, the provider was working with this particular student on, for example, looking at the weight of assignments. You know, if you have an assignment that's worth a hundred points versus an assignment worth twenty points, taking that into consideration, taking into consideration, um, how soon is it due? How much time do I need um to prepare for this? Um, building on skills. So some assignments um might be more important to build on the later skills um than other assignments. And then whether the student can still turn it in. So in our Power School, um, teachers know if a student, if a assignment is still something that a student can turn in and get credit for. Um, oftentimes they'll have a little note that will say, you know, hand in by, there's a date to get credit. So really building those skills, like Jen was saying, you know, our goal is that they learn to do this and they can do this on their own because these are the skills they need for high school and, and well beyond. Um, so they were working with that. And then also initiation and initiation, task initiation. So helping the student with a routine so that they got started, which we were noticing, um, particularly within a student's study hall. Um, they were not initiating, they were not, they were having a really hard time getting going on assignments. So supporting the student with that. Um, and then initiation with teachers too. So reaching out to the teachers um to ask about it, the, you know, if they saw they could still hand something in, but they weren't sure when the due date was. Um, so having those conversations or hey, you finished it, making sure they reach out to the teacher to let them know that it was finished. So the teacher needs to go back and, and degrade that. So really looking at those skills, as you can see with this, um, we have our baseline data. Um, and initially, um, we saw that the student was struggling. That's the percent of, or that was the percent of assignments, I'm sorry, that were completed. You can see on the left, it ranged anywhere from thirty-three percent to seventy-two percent. Um, and everything in yellow is below that eighty percent goal. Um, and if you can see as the year went on, um, they became more successful consistently um handing in uh that eighty percent or more of assignments. Um, it did take um a little bit for the student to initially uh buy into the process. Um, they were not, uh, you know, initially weren't um totally thrilled to, to go and get the support. But it's beautiful. The student actually comes more often than they're supposed to now. Um, they've really bought into it. They're really doing well. Um, I did put our, uh, they updated in there, but that map is, uh, yeah, is back up. Um, but it's really been great and the um provider continued most um that engagement with the process. Uh, feeling, feeling good about it, um, and really that success. And the student um is still involved in it. We're not feeling, you know, we like to see some, a couple consistent months of that eighty percent before we let them fly on their own. Um, but, and we will be reducing uh the frequency with which they come. But um really, really some nice success and obviously that is reflected in the student's grades as well now that they're getting more assignments in. Cause like Jen was saying, we were noticing it wasn't, it wasn't the assessment um that they were doing poorly on. It was, uh, they were missing a lot of assignments and that was really um hurting their grades. Obviously, you know, would be hurting their preparation for exams as well. But the thing that stood out to us with a large number of assignments they were missing, being that help with that prioritization and initiation. Um, so for our second student.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
The, the previous chart, does this, does the student see that chart?
Um, yes, actually.
Is this their incentive to, ooh, hey, I'm gonna do better on my next block?
Yes.
Cause I was trying to figure out what's their incentive really, like I can imagine starting up. That's just seems like more worth it.
Yeah.
You know, right? Do I get the company?
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, so that, so then you get to see this.
They do that. And the nice thing is when Jen was saying that we, we progress check too. So the way it's set up, you can, the, the providers are looking back as well to the previous, like, hey, look where we were last week. Look where we are this week and we can see that progress. Um, I also know the conversations with the students' parents. Um, they were really cheering the student on and um I know praising the student as well. So that was also, uh, you know, a big, a huge support as well. But also in the student's grades, the changes in grades, um, were also a, a really big motivator because when um the kids understanding the impact of the zero or, you know, yeah, how much that extra grade.
Well, I imagine it takes some time before they see that.
It does, it does. And that's what I love about. It does, it does. And that's what I love about that chart because it shows them, you know, it's our data that shows them, hey, when you do this, it's a difference that makes. And that's great. So. For student, our second student, this is one of our students who's working on math skills specifically. They were having trouble solving multi-step equations and math problems. And so quarter one, quarter two, just consistently struggled with any quiz test. It was not, it was not going well for this particular student. We, frequency with which they're receiving interventions is twice a week, forty-three minutes each session. Again, being pulled from a study hall and working directly with a math teacher during that time period. Really to kind of build some of those missing foundational skills that's holding the student back from being successful in their current math class. So working backwards to fill in some gaps while also reinforcing what they're learning in their current math class. So to not fall behind in their current math class as well. So doing kind of a little bit of both. And what we noticed as we've gone through the academic year is that quarters three and four, the average score on the summative assessments has increased by ten percent with, I mean, there was one quiz back in the beginning of April, end of March, that was a ninety-something. So, you know, dramatic difference in the assessment scores there. Or perhaps even more telling is the student has from our math teacher who's been working with the student, has become far more engaged in the process. Again, reluctant at first towards the beginning of the year, why do I have to miss a study hall with my friends to do more math? I don't like math, but has really actually started seeking out our math teacher on their own to say, I'm working today, I'm working today. So just seeing that level of engagement improve and, and the grades as well, that's really encouraging. In terms of next steps, Jen and I are currently working with a consultant to create an MTSS manual for the HHS. So like we said before, we're new to the process this year. We've changed it up from the previous year. And our goal with the manual is really to create a process that can, let's say, run itself. But so it is, it's more, you know, more outlined and in an easier process for everybody. Everything from, you know, really laying out identification, progress monitoring, intervention and all of that. So that, that will be wonderful. Once we finish that, we're still in the process of working on it. We hope for continued development with that MTSS consultant. Again, next year is our hope. We will continue the staff development for the tier one interventions, executive function skill development. And again, our staff really learns a lot from each other, works well together. And we find, you know, when we come together, we come up with great ideas and we'll be continuing that to own research on that. And then extending beyond like Jen said, as our first year, wanted to start small and do it well. Yeah, we wanted to start small, do well and keep it manageable. And next year we'll be looking to expand it to other skills. Any questions?
It was a great, great presentation. I had so many questions, but you answered all of them, by the way. So we're really, really good, especially the executive leadership skills or executive coaching skills, whatever you call that, very real world. So what percentage of kids do you think we service through the different tiers?
I wouldn't start.
Yeah, sure, sure.
So tier one is usually about eighty percent of our kids fall into tier one, fifteen percent about fall kind of in that, or fifteen to twenty fall in that tier two, tier three range. So just thinking of exact numbers, this year for reading, per K through five, we service ninety-four within tier two or tier three. But that is not technically ninety-four kids because it is a fluid process. So we do have kids that go from tier two to tier three the next cycle. Then we're like, oh, you're doing amazing. Let's move them back to the tier two. So some of those kids maybe counted twice within that kind of number. And then math, we service twenty-eight. And so that's between tier two and tier three. And then on the middle school level, grade six, throughout the year, we serviced about fifteen, grade seven thirteen, and then grade eight nine.
That, so that's the percentage of kids actually in the program?
Yes.
But those numbers, if you think about the whole school, there's some kids that just don't go through.
Yes, about eighty percent of our kids just don't kind of hit that tier one and they don't need that extra support. I will say because we are Bolton and we are so fortunate in having interventionists and teachers who really want to pick up their kids for, sometimes, you know, that tier two, the smallest things, we don't, we don't push anyone away, right? So because we are such a fortunate district, we do encourage, if you want to pick them up for a tier two, because you really think they do need some more help with this particular goal, go ahead. Whereas maybe in, you know, a different situation, we wouldn't have the resources to do that. So we are fortunate in that way.
Yeah. And at, at the high school level, again, very fluid, our tier two, tier three. You know, sometimes it's hard, even Leah and I will have conversations, is this more tier two or more tier three? When we were talking through some of our students recently, we, we probably have four high school students who are genuine tier three, really receiving very targeted instruction. And another thirteen or so of that are like bored, like the tier two, sometimes three, depending on the month, the week. Kind of, you know, fluctuating out. That's over the course of the year. Some that we work with in the fall have graduated out and, you know, are up and running and don't need our support anymore. We've got additional ones in, so it's a very fluid process. We have as kind of an ancillary part to our MTS program. One of our math teachers has sort, started a math center of sorts during some periods throughout the week where students can come for additional maths or any student who happens to have a study hall that period. So they're not students that we're identifying or saying, you need to go to math center. But she has been tracking data on that and has been seeing about the twelve students on a regular basis are her frequent flyers that she sees once a week popping in. And then others here and there as, as needed. So. But yeah, it's similar to what, you know, the tier, you know, you want fewer in that tier three. That's where you want your smallest percentage to be and everyone's receiving tier one. So. And as we broaden our scope of skills that we're looking at, that number will grow.
Right. It might change.
The other group that we, you know, next year as we grow will probably take more advantage of is you think of those students where life happens. Maybe they're hospitalized. We had students who had to travel out of the country for funerals, those kinds of things. So when they return with a flexible program, we can create, we can support them and maybe in the very short term, maybe just for a matter of weeks. As opposed to, all right, you've been out for three weeks, welcome back, go, go get them tiger, right? So we hope to, to, the numbers wouldn't be represented to your question, but there's another pot of kids that we hope to serve to.
And some of this year, some of our seniors who were maybe struggling with the last little bits of capstone preparation for that presentation, we pulled a handful of those kids just so that they could get, you know, once or twice, you know, meeting with the teacher to kind of make sure they were good to go. So we didn't count them in our numbers, but they're still students that, you know, we used our supports to support. Yeah.
So I have a question about the elementary level. When you're pulling kids out for tier two and tier three support, especially in the younger grades, how are you ensuring that they are not missing new content being presented in classroom? Especially for those who are going out five days a week for forty-two minutes or whatever the time.
Yes, that's a great question. So we have the win time, which is our what I need time. And that is time where there is no tier one curriculum being taught. So during that thirty minutes a day, every day it's win time, K through five, and that's every student getting what they need. So a lot of times our special education students who receive services get pulled out during that time. Our tier three students get pulled out during that time. And then our classroom teachers will work with their tier two small group during that time. And then the students who are still left in the room, they will do reading centers, math centers. Some of them might do like an enrichment project, like a book club. But no core tier one curriculum is being taught at that time to ensure that nobody misses out on anything falls behind.
Thank you.
I just want, want to thank you all for all the hard work. It's very, makes me very happy to hear that it sounds like every kid is being met where they need to be and you're really not leaving it behind and meeting everybody. And it's gotta be really gratifying to both the staff and the students to see the improvement and to see the more buy-in. Like makes it exciting that they're taking more of an interest in their own education. So I just want to thank you all very much. Great work.
Thank you. There, you want to do a PCS update?
So very quick update. As reports the final stretch of the year, things are buzzing with excitement and I mean that. This is what I was up, we're just talking about end of the year, spring, head setting toward the end of the year and I feel that energy. Our students are enjoying a wide range of activities, including field trips, field days and special classroom events. Throughout the month of May, students have been working on smarter mouse testing and NGSS testing. So they're working very hard in the morning. We're giving them some extra breaks during the day, trying to get that energy out because they're super focused on the morning testing. Meanwhile, our eighth graders are looking forward to several special milestones, including their trip to Hyde Meadows. I usually go, but ask Mrs. Keller, if you'd want to go, this is the big thing for me to give that trip up. It's such a fun time. The class night dance on June sixth and their promotion ceremony on June twelfth. The promotion program, which you're all invited to attend as well, starts at ten AM on June twelfth and truly is a very special event. Friends and families all come together to celebrate our amazing eighth grade students. Like I said, the energy around school is contagious and students are excited to wrap up the year and look forward to some.
So softball was on the road today. Tennis was on the road today. And in a very odd move from Bolton High School, there was a double header of baseball. And I share all that because that's why our three special students were not, were not here tonight. So with the predicted bad weather the next few days, Mr. Humiston and Coach Richard scrambled yesterday to completely rearrange and create a double header that started at three o'clock today. And Mr. Humiston did venture out in the school pickup truck and picked up, I don't know, was it fifty or sixty bags of game saver, which is the cute name for speedy drive, to actually get the field even playable. So my guess is two of our students that we're going to recognize tonight are on the baseball team. Probably figured by the time they were done that we weren't going to wait, which of course we did. So that's where they are. And then our third representative was also in tennis. On top of all that, there were in AP land and we're talking about some of our top performers. They're trying to balance regular school day, family life, athletics and prepping for AP. So before I give my, my end of year notes, maybe you want to speak to our three recipients and share that information.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Well, we were also going to recognize Andrew for being our senior representative for the last two years. So that is a little gift for him. And we would just like to say thank you for your service to the board for the last two years and we wish you the very best. Moving on to our next announcements. It gives me great pleasure to announce Andrew Goodness and Anishka Ray as this year's co-valedictorians for the class of 2025. We'll talk about Andrew first. Andrew has shown strong commitment and effort throughout his high school career and has consistently demonstrated academic excellence, earning top honors across rigorous coursework. He's been involved in multiple school activities that made a positive impact on those around him. Andrew's hard work and determination have helped him reach this important milestone and we're proud of all he has achieved. This fall, he will be attending Quinnipiac University and we look forward to seeing all the great things he will accomplish in the future. Congratulations, Andrew, to you and your family. Our next co-valedictorian is Anishka Ray. Anishka's intellect and leadership have left an enduring mark on our school community and she is a shining example of perseverance and curiosity. She has consistently excelled in high level classes throughout her high school career while balancing time for a variety of extracurricular activities. Beyond the classroom, her contributions to student life, whether through clubs, volunteer work or mentoring peers, have enriched our school and those around her. We are incredibly proud to celebrate her success and are excited to see her continue her academic journey this fall at the University of Connecticut. Congratulations to Anishka and her family. And last, but certainly not least is Joseph Goddick, who is our salutatorian. Congratulations to Joseph. His exceptional achievements, both academically and athletically, have set him apart as a true leader among his peers. As a dedicated two-sport athlete, he has demonstrated remarkable discipline and resilience, balancing a rigorous academic course load in a demanding athletic schedule. His commitment to excellence, whether in the classroom or on the field, reflects a high level of maturity and determination that is truly commendable. We celebrate his accomplishments with pride and look forward to the bright future that lies ahead. Joey will be attending the University of Connecticut in the fall. Congratulations to Joey and his family.
Thank you. So we're quickly winding down the year. And as you heard from Grace, there's still a lot of stuff going on. We're working to plan underclassman awards as well as the 2025 commencement program. Graduation will take place six thirty PM on Monday, June ninth. The ceremony will be outside in the parking lot, whether permitting, and in the gym if weather is in clement. As we've done in the past, the graduation ceremony will also include all senior awards and presentations by the Bolton Scholarship Fund. As always, we would love for all members of Boy Education to attend and if you could RSVP to Director Gold Snyder, that would be great. And we're still keeping busy. For example, one hundred and twenty-eight AP exams are being administered in this room between this week and next week. We're still working on getting ready for next year with the master's schedule and we are already preparing to welcome the class of 2025. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we do not have any unfinished business. We have several items of new business and hopefully we were able to review Kristen's weekly update at the end of last week, which covered most of these things. So the first one is the Bolton High School last day of school, which due to well issues and fire personal responses, we have an uneven number of days that have occurred at both schools. So we are being asked to shorten the Bolton High School only school year to one hundred eighty days so that all of the school system will be done on the same day, which is June twelfth, I believe. If you have anything to add.
No, just that the teachers and the para educators will make up the time that they miss on that day by completing four hours of professional development on their own time. We'll be sending all that out tomorrow when this passes, if it passes. And admin assistants will also be required to make up the time on their own between now and the end of the school year.
So looking for a motion to make the Bolton High School student school year one hundred and eighty days. So all students, three K to twelve, end on the same day in June, twenty twenty-five. So. Second. And so anyone have any questions or comments about this?
It doesn't, does that have any impact on money that we get? No, right now.
No, it does not.
Um, any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed or abstaining. The next item is the Bolton High School garage bid waiver. Sure, if you have information.
Sure. The BHS, BHS garage is a capital project. Jill Collins spoke with the auditor who shared with, that the BOE needs to approve the bid waiver, not the board of selectmen, even though it's in their budget. John Buttermolvich is recommending Belfour for the garage at BHS. Belfour is part of the Omnia Partners, which is a national buying consortium. You have the quotes in front of you. The quotes are two hundred, two thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. There's already two hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred dollars already approved in capital for this project. So they're much lower than what John has given as a quote for the project. Andrew, I believe you have a motion there, right?
Yes. So looking on this or a motion to approve the bid waiver and award Belfour, the bid for the BHS garage in the amount of two hundred and two thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. All right. Does anyone have any questions or comments from us? I'd just like to comment how excited I am that something came in under bid for everybody's life.
Do we know what happens to the unspent capital monies? Do they stay on our side of the?
I don't have any idea.
If I could answer that, they do not, Chris. They go back into the capital fund and over time, once money accumulates in that fund, it goes to town meeting where it's allowed, I believe it's town meeting, where it's decided that it can be either redistributed or, or put towards another project.
Which is what happened with the sidewalks or whatever it was years ago, a lot of us.
Correct.
Uh, Vulcan stove, which still is better than what you can buy now, and, uh, whatever else. I can't remember, there's a bunch of things going back five or six years.
Well, those were bonded projects, the capital projects are a little different. But you're right, that's what happened with those as well.
Wait, where is the BHS garage?
There isn't one, right?
Yeah, but where, what are we gonna do with it?
So the purpose of the garage was for storage, Ashley, because we are, we have really no storage at the high school, we, we put our soccer nets, um. In the woods, um, they rust quickly over time and we have to replace them. We have a lot of athletic equipment that, um. Gets stored in places where it shouldn't be, or it doesn't get stored at all, um, along with, uh, mowers and, and other types of, uh, equipment.
Other vehicles, right? The back corner of this, this side of student parking lot, in the, in the far back.
Like our, uh, van, there was other vehicles that were gonna go.
Two vans, well, basically.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone have any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose or abstaining? Uh, on to the Novus Insight Managed IC IT Support for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, which is retroactive. Uh, and it was wanted by the Augur, I believe.
Correct, um. Let's see, Novus Insight is a CR COG awarded IT service under vendor. Service vendor for cybersecurity, infrastructure services, and model policies, and general IT assistance. Services provided to Bolton include managed technology support, backup services for Beam and Microsoft. Return sixty-five cybersecurity endpoint licenses, know before training program. Private cloud housing, email filtering, and other related technology needs. The auditor has shared that although Novus is a CR COG awarded IT service vendor. A retroactive bid waiver needs to be approved for Novus Insight as our managed IC, IT support. Because the Board of Selectmen has not yet approved the resolution that would allow the BOS and BOE to use consortium bids, which John Buttermovich has. Would have been told was going to happen. So we need a motion to retroactively waive the bid toward Novus Insight as a managed IT support for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five year.
I'll make a motion to waive.
Maria. One second. Uh, does anyone have any questions or comments about this?
Just to clarify, we're not necessarily doing it because the auditor wants it, we're doing it because we're retroactively.
We had a, a discussion about this. I don't, I thought that we did it, but.
Uh, for going forward for the next three-year contract?
Because they've, they've done a great job, and I would, I want to say, I think it's important for this type of company. And service to have a continuance, if things are going well, we should keep it in service.
Yes, that was going forward, and this is for the year that it's almost over.
Andrew, if I could also add, I, I think it would, it, something that Ashley and Ria that you may want to take up, um, at finance. At some point, because my understanding was that this was going to be, um, I think it has to be in a town meeting where this is approved because it's a. A change, and I think it's an ordinance change, but it certainly would make things a lot easier because we get so much better pricing from the consortium. Pieces, um, than we would otherwise, as evidenced by the garage and the, um, technology that we have purchased. So I just throw that out there for future thought.
Um, any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstaining? Passes as well, on to resignations.
We did receive a resignation from BCS Administrative Assistant Christine Patnog, and we would like to thank her for her service to Bolton Public Schools, and we wish her well.
And one final thing, uh, we have a first read policy.
All right.
Looks like it was a complete rewrite.
Yes, so, uh, basically, we are replacing the current policy five-one-three-one dot nine. Not currently called the Connecticut School Climate Policy, but that's what the replacement will be called. Um, it's basically, uh, it's a new model policy from shipment in Goodwin, and. It reflects a number of recent changes to Connecticut state law that will go into effect on July first. So, uh, it's our first read tonight, and then second read at our June meeting. Uh, yeah, so I guess there's, there's, there's a lot of little differences throughout, I'll try to summarize them, um. That Kristen, please feel free to jump in and correct me if I get anything wrong or miss anything, um. That the changes tend to come in, uh, several different areas, um, there's clarification as to the scope of the policy. There are updated definitions, um, there are some expanded responsibilities for the staff people who. Are charged with implementing the policy. Uh, there are some strengthened reporting procedures, clarifications about parent notification and parent rights. And, uh, some enhanced prevention and, and response measures. So as far as clarified scope, um. The policy's been revised to explicitly name and define bullying, teen dating violence, harassment, and discrimination, whereas. The existing policy referred to those in more, some more general terms. Uh, the new policy emphasizes that the policy applies both on and off school grounds, so that it also covers electronic communications, uh. Email, that sort of thing. It has updated definitions, again, of, uh, bullying, uh, defined cyberbullying, teen dating violence, uh, discrimination, harassment. Uh, a lot of those updated definitions are to meet changes in state law. Uh, it provides some expanded responsibilities, um, but maybe it's not really expanded, but, uh. It does, uh. As that the school have a safe school climate coordinator, which I assume will be. Physician that is already, you know, it's already.
We already.
Correct, it's bad, yes.
So it's just really a name change. Um. And then the, the role of the safe school climate specialist will have, I guess, some additional reporting and investigation responsibilities. Uh, it adds or clarifies some timelines for reporting by school staff, uh, so the oral report is due within one school day of an incident being reported. And a written report is due within two school days. Uh, it includes a requirement to investigate all reports promptly and to notify parents and guardians. Uh, of any involved students, uh, when an investigation begins. It clarifies that the schools must notify parents and guardians of any verified bullying incidents within forty-eight hours of completing the investigation. And parents must be informed of their rights and availability, available remedies under state statutes, uh, on the Board of Ed website. And then, uh, the enhanced prevention and response measures include mandated inclusion of. Anti-bullying language in student codes of conduct. I think we already have a lot of that already, but. And then, uh, it requires implementation, development and implementation of prevention and intervention strategies for staff. And lastly, would like the schools to invite parents of victims to meetings discussing safety measures and future prevention strategies. Anything to add?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, we will be voting on that next month. Uh, we have no future business, and now we're looking for a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. Questions? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you all for coming this evening.